Joe resigned.
Did he?
I heard the rumors, but I had not heard it.
In writing.
Do we want to put that under new business? Where do we want to put that?
I don't want to put it anywhere really until the select board announces it publicly.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
That's their job, not ours.
That makes sense.
For tonight, Joe's just not here, but at our next, at our next meeting, that should be official, I would think. He did turn in in writing, didn't he?
He did.
He did, okay.
He resigned from the select board also?
Yeah.
He resigned from the select board, yes, and that takes him off.
Yeah, takes him off here.
Gotcha. Reason else why, or can I just cut out?
Personal reasons.
Yes.
We'll leave it.
Okay, welcome, Ed.
Thank you. Seven o'clock, Mr. Chair.
Seven now? Okay, one of we called me doors. So we have. Should we start with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, liberty, and justice for all. In attendance, Mr. Mr. Jake Morgan, Mr. Paul Simbley-Birdhammer, and Ed Spiker. Who is now, I guess we say, introduce him as a temporary ex hoc.
Correct.
Okay, as a temporary ex hoc member. I don't see any additions to the agenda, nobody has filed requests up here. We're approving the minutes, they're going around somewhere.
Yeah, there was a. And that gets us to old business. Should we start with the mechanics of a public hearing for our introduction? We'll start there and then we'll go on to the individual input and things. I think we were at the meeting, Ed, and you were saying giving up the four items, but the ex hoc member doesn't have one because you're gonna ultimately have to go. Don't feel denied, it's just.
I'm brand new here, I won't take offense to not having anything on my plate right now.
Is there any reason why we couldn't have the public hearing at our next regularly scheduled next month, October, or whatever?
Well, is it for? For these things?
Yeah, the first public hearing to consider.
I mean, I'm not sure how other people's. When I was doing the research for mine, I kind of found some things that we could discuss. I don't know if it'll change anything with the fees, just because I did, I got a bunch of comparison numbers, so I guess we can see.
Well, that we're gonna, we're gonna get to talk.
Yeah.
We'll talk about each individual item, you'll then each individual item as we go in, right? Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we go through the different assignments and see if we actually have materials for?
Okay.
So I agree simply because as I got further into the wireless communications. There's. New Hampshire Department of Energy has. An actual plan, sorry. They actually have some of them set up municipalities. So I reached out to them and they're going to be sending us some, some of them to look at, to see which one could suit our municipality. Because most of the RSA, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn. The RSA basically covers almost everything we need to worry about, with the exception of fall zones and permitting. And are we going to allow something to stay up there for two years without having an antenna on it? So besides a few specific points, the RSA covers it. So they actually have some ordinance languages that they give to municipalities to look at, to help them with these things. Why reinvent the wheel?
Okay, did they give you any kind of an idea of what?
I should have it in a week.
Oh, okay.
But I won't know until I go through it what they actually have.
So, so it's premature then to go on that one? Early October. The reason is that I'm gonna be out of here probably about 20th of November, if I want to obviously have this, have this put to bed by then. So we can, you know, when realistically late, late October, and then if there's a problem, you could always have another meeting in October. Could always have a second.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Or at the end of regular scheduled meeting on whatever date or beginning.
Or, you know, November.
Well, the thing is, it says in the RSA, if there's an objection, then you have to have a second meeting and then that you're gonna start running. Just scheduling. And I, or I will be going, but I'll be listening. We'll be able to talk.
Well, we, we are going in early because according to the calendar, the last day the post have published the notice for the first public hearing. If a second hearing is anticipated, it's Thursday, January 11th of 2024. So if we go in in September, we go in in October and November, we're actually going ahead of the game, which is good for us.
Remember, we had a plan last year for that, and what happened to that? It blew up because our chairman decided to walk out.
We lost the board.
Well, we could either have a special meeting of us later this month and then try to aim for the beginning of October. Or we can do the October meeting as planned and finalize and then just schedule, you know, two weeks later, say, okay, we're doing the public. Meeting now.
Okay, so why don't we move with the meeting now to Kim about what?
Wireless.
Not wireless, but what was standing in the way of your being ready to go forward. Chris, why don't we, why don't you talk now about what your concern?
Well, I don't. I got some stuff. This is. I got from a bunch of the surrounding towns. So this is like a spreadsheet of comparison of the fees. So everyone can look at that for a second because it's. Because that was, as we talked about, something we were gonna kind of use as a presentation tool to say, you know. What? To show the comparison.
We're leaving a couple dollars on the table, huh?
Well, I mean, that's the thing that you'll see. These were kind of.
On driveway coverage, right up there.
Yeah, these are kind of nearby thing, towns, but obviously I don't know that like Grantham is necessarily in the same like league that we are. And they're, you know, they're kind of strange because it seems like, you know, like minor subdivisions 20, but then when you do a major, they jack it up to 300. So it's very like. So that one seemed to be a bit of a arbitrary. Yeah, outlier, I think, compared to the other ones. The. And then what I also found, which I don't know if this is something to decide or just kind of put in there as a. You know, I'm trying to think of how to make it clear because like you could see these notes at the bottom, so most of them. They have like an application fee and a lot fee, and then the other is kind of, they spell out, you're gonna have to pay for.
This is what you pay for.
Yeah, but it says like, you know, these checks aren't, you know, this one goes to Sullivan County, this one goes here, this one you're gonna have to pay 750 each for the postal. Which I don't, you know, I don't think you want to put a postal rate in your published thing, but. But I could see making it clear that you're gonna, you know, pay the application fee, pay the per lot fee to the town. And then you're gonna have to pay for, I guess not the newspaper ad anymore, but you know, the payment for.
The abutting notice.
Yeah, the abutting notices per like postal fees and that you're gonna have to pay for the registration deeds. Yeah, and the miler, so I think that's a question of a lot of towns seem to kind of. Either, either they're basically saying people are gonna like give that to the town. Even though it's made out to like Sullivan County, but I'm just saying it may be worth. Putting it on there somewhere so someone doesn't just say, oh, 50 for this and then 50 for the lot. And then they come in and it's like, oh, you got this much for the abutters, this much for that, this much for the registry, I don't know.
Well, and also you add to that the fact that the assessors have to do something, you have to change the, the tax map has to be changed. And I don't know what plate charges us for that, and that's kind of a hard. But I mean, there are, you know, you can add those as to, these are the things that it's covering.
Yeah.
In our case, and I suspect.
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean, I think that could be part of the explanation, but I just think that. I don't know, something to discuss, do we put a, ask like a note where these are the town fees and then additional like county and postal fees apply?
So if we had a checklist, if you have a minor subdivision, it's going to be this application fee. And then it would be this fee for the abutters times so many abutters. And then it would be this amount of money for the recording and this amount of money. So we'd have a checklist and these are the things that you're going to need to provide. And then we can write in the fees on the checklist times.
And that was what, like this one is one that does that, where you kind of do the math and total it. Except I'm not sure because, you know, they basically have you say, this is the miler fee, this is this, and then it makes it seem like you're paying that to the town.
Well, I like this.
Yeah, and when you do, you pay it to the town and the town person.
So.
Because that's, that's based on size of the buildings, or else.
Oh, well. I think that makes it more clear to the person that there are these town fees and then there's, you're gonna have to pay for the mailing, the butter thing, you're gonna have to pay for the miler. You're gonna have to pay for the registry deeds on your own, but you at least know that that's coming.
Is that true when they give us the check and if we have administrative help, Melissa now, wouldn't they, or the town clerk would go? File the milar, say, pay the fee at that time?
I mean, I'm not.
Sure how the fees act, I mean.
Seems like people haven't, you know, they give the check here, but it's for Sullivan County, so I don't know who takes it over there. But that's what I mean, it's kind of weird because they're not.
They do, they take it over. You don't want to change that because. Yeah, but let them be responsible for pulling the milar. What we were talking about for the town deeds, correct, and some other stuff for here. Yeah.
Don't the deeds have to be filed with the Newport?
Oh, okay, so he's, he's gonna go over there with the deeds. Yeah, but not milers, I, I wouldn't, I would, I would put it on the home over to file the milers.
Well, yeah, so.
But I like, I like that form, it's nice, because it spells out everything.
But I think in our case. If they're gonna do the, like, I think that one might just show the milers, what, 26 bucks, but it's not putting that onto your total, but it's showing.
Oh, what, what it costs them when they go down the road.
Yeah. And then, so that was my real thing, I mean, my, what I was gonna talk about was that, you know, these are the proposed changes to the fee schedule. You know, the land use fees are set, can be set for the RSAs by the planning board, just so people. And I do have something I found, well, I'll get to that in a minute. Our fee structure has basically not been updated since the seventies, nor adjusted for inflation. And then, yeah, examining the fee structures of nearby municipalities, we basically reassessing the fees.
Okay, go online and just get, type in Google, you know, inflation between da, da, and da, and you're gonna have something like.
Yeah.
380% or something like that, it's just horrendous.
But I think that's interesting because it doesn't, you know, the other town fees, none of them are like totally wild.
Totally what?
Totally wild.
No, not out of scamp.
So the, and then the visualization part, which I haven't kind of finalized, but I think there's two ways you could kind of present it. One would be like a, well, this was one idea I had, which was, you know, this is the range. Based on the eight towns, 30 to 100, and we got, ours is 50 now, we're going to 75, but it kind of shows you right now.
Yeah, but I think this is, this really.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking if I, if we're showing it at the meeting.
Right, I'm thinking, right, what, what will we give to the audience? I would think something like this would be, and, and that, wherever that went, and something like that, we have it.
Because the other option would be to kind of make like bar graphs, you know, and just, if we even think we need that, but say, okay, you know, Newport, blah, blah, blah. If you think that's good. And then. So something I did find in the RSAs, which I'll pass this around because I was kind of confused about it. But when I was searching about the. Basically to find out what RSA like governed this and the fees and everything so that we know that, because it may be a question. But apparently this was revised in 2022. And the, I think it's this bottom, at the very bottom, item three was added. Anything? And so I just wanted to check on that.
Shall we post it? We, we are not in compliance with this. We need to have a fee schedule of all the fees in the town, not only land use board, but all fees that the town imposes posted.
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, some of that we can't do anything about, but if we could get the land use fees at least put up, that covers portion of it.
You understand too that there are, some of these fees are in the. Land subdivision regulations versus the ordinance, okay, there, there are both.
So we do have them in subdivision regs, so they're there, and they're in zoning regs, but what, what this does. This is supposed to say that it is up to the town to take all of the fees from all of the different boards and commissions and apartments. And put them all together in one document like this.
Yeah.
And so that anybody can come in and say, okay, whatever I do, this is it, this is, this is what I think, that's, that's what this is supposed to do.
Yep, because when I started my process, I came in, I got three different answers.
So this is kind of, so that I just stumbled on, but obviously it needs to be, I mean, this is what, I should have just printed this out. This is a separate document labeled notice of land use board fees under RSA. This should be created that provides a complete listing of fees. Yeah, including building code, historic district, so I guess everything, but that's in effect, so. Put something together, I guess, as soon as possible, anyways.
We should have one for what is now. But.
Well, I mean, I can take the current fees, at least for the stuff that is part of ours, and put that language on there, and we could print it and.
That would be great.
Get that at least out.
Yes.
Staple it to the ball. Just post it on the website.
Oh, yeah, and I think it also.
Yes, it says we should post it on the website, so if you could do that, the current fees, so we could at least publish them, since you've already done all of that work.
So I guess the first thing is, do we, are we, with this scale, are we in agreement with the proposed increases that we put in? Are we comfortable with that?
Yeah, the things I flagged of possible kind of unknowns are the minor subdivision fee. We're gonna kind of be going to 75, which will put us kind of on the high end. Based on these, so that's one thing I.
Minor subdivision, still have to go through the, the tax map, still have to go through the assessors, still have to go through a lot of the processes. Yeah, but I think our, I think our major subdivision application fee needs to be more money.
Well, we've got, oh, we actually cut that down, we went from 100 to 50, and I forgot what our right rationale was. It's for the per lot, yeah, I wasn't sure.
That was for the per lot fee.
Per lot fee, yeah.
Per lot fee.
So maybe the per lot fee should stay, 75 for the application fee should just be across the board for a subdivision fee.
Yeah, any.
And then any subdivision fee, and then the per lot fee should stay at the $100 rather than.
I don't know, I.
Okay, but can we, how about an asterisk on the 75 for the major subdivision, saying if for some reason incur further costs? In terms of a major, major subdivision, which in we have to hire engineers or something like that, then.
That goes on to the. Any, if you're hiring any engineer or you're hiring anybody else, the applicant pays for it.
Correct, but so I would say, but somehow asterisk, which would cover your concerns about something enough and saying, hey, for whatever, and I don't know what language you use. To say that, basically, aren't you getting into site plan if engineers are hired? So what's a major subdivision, three lots or more?
Three or more lots.
I, I, I personally think that you've got Grantham at $300, Unity at $200, and Newport at 150, but they're a major, they're the major city here. I think that fee needs to be a couple, 250 or 200 bucks.
Yeah, it seems like for that, the more standard is like the actual application fee is higher and then the per lot is not much different than the other.
I would make a, I wouldn't have a difference between a major and a minor.
The minor subdivision is basically, as we had Johnson's, they had 15 acres, they carved out a home lot for their child, they kept the remainder.
But that's a minor.
That's a minor, and it's very minimal, and so I think we had was fine. If we have into one lot, if one lot is retained by the original owner, then we're not really doing a whole heck of a lot, just adding an additional line for one plot.
I would, I would increase the application fee for major subdivision. I'd bring that up to a couple hundred bucks.
And then what, leave the lot fee to?
Yeah.
I mean, if any, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, what do you think, Chris? I mean, you, you've got some pretty good data here that shows we're really light on that. I mean, I don't count, Washington is, is. That's a tough one because there's a lot of.
Well, and those.
Tough to develop in Washington.
I'd have to find the others, but. You know, some of them, like I said, they tack on other stuff.
Right.
Based on what plot and, so they don't, you know, the per lot fee is not that much, but then you kind of get into.
Right, what are those other fees for in Washington, for example, on a major subdivision? 75.
I can pull out the computer, but.
Recall if you.
It may just be that they spell out the abutter.
And I've never been to the cemetery to see this supposedly. Oh, when you say down here, is that list of abutters, notices, miler, and county fees, is that what that 75 to 120 is?
Let me double check.
Which, oh, the.
Well, I've got the actual. What are we looking at?
If it's a major subdivision.
Washington or?
Washington, 75 to 120 bucks for other.
So they've got. No, so those extra, so, so they just have subdivision, so 30 for application fee plus 10 per lot. And then they're spelling out certified notification.
Okay.
Per abutter, the newspaper fees 50, tax has to be.
All the extra fees are 75 for 120.
But then they have per lot, you know, two is another 10, so it's kind of a mix.
Just to play the devil's advocate here, what more work do we do with an application for a major versus a minor?
Well, right now, not all that much, but a major could also be somebody coming in and giving us a subdivision for 24. Plan for 24 parcels and a road and cul-de-sac or two cul-de-sacs off the road and all of that. So that could be a major subdivision.
Okay, but then why don't we pick that up on the $100 per lot and just have the 75? Because the initial meeting, they bring their plan in, right, we're gonna look at it. As we do any of them and we're gonna. So you're thinking leaving the fee at 75 and then just, and leave the per lot fee at 100?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. So if it becomes a, a major, you know, like. So if it's 24 lots, it's a 2400 dollar, it's a 2400 dollar permit fee, I like that. And Dylan, you're damn lucky we're not charging impact fee and send them on the. Well, we're gonna do that next.
No, we will have to because they're gonna have.
So. I got the major, we'll just.
Leave it the way it is.
Well, we have.
Be in 100 or 75 and 100?
75 and 100.
75 and 100.
So that 75, oh, yeah.
Let's do that.
Where are we at?
Yeah, we're gonna leave that at 100, we're not gonna change it.
And that's going up, okay, and then let's see, I mean, some of the towns don't even have the annexation, I don't think that's gonna be a big. And then voluntary merger, I think the only one that was, I had another note about was the driveway.
Okay.
But I mean, that we, I think part of the presentation explanation is that, like we discussed, the driveway or the road agent is now kind of handling that and includes at least two visits, so.
And that's due, I'd leave it at 50.
Yeah, so I don't know what the other towns have, but I feel like that's enough explanation to save a few hours of time.
Okay, I went, I ran into Jason Root and I told him we were including the zoning board fees also proposal, and he said, fine, told him what they were.
Yeah, and so those I didn't get too in depth with, with the other towns, because I wasn't sure whether. I mean, whether that's even our jurisdiction, are we gonna be presenting the zoning board changes and presenting them?
As, as the planning board, we propose the change.
Okay. So I mean, that I would probably want to get some other numbers, because a lot of the towns, it's the planning are one thing and the zoning's another, so you're not all together, but.
But, but I think this is a nice format to give people.
And I think. And then this isn't for right now, but I also included what other places have for the site plan. For our future reference.
Site plan review.
Yeah. But that's not applicable yet, or maybe never, but.
This is good, Chris, I think this.
So that's my only thought is potentially making like a graph or something to show on a screen that is a little more. I think it's easier to just say, okay, like we're going from this to this, we're still like in the range than saying like 50 to 100 for some people, but.
And the last annexation, voluntary waiver, actually the last annexation, we waived the fee. That's, that's set up already in the regulations that we can waive them because they weren't doing anything except removing a lot line. So if you waived the application fee and they could just pay for the tax map. Just so that everybody.
They have to change the deed, right?
They have, that's on that, they took all of that, that's the addition.
Well, I thought that's what we were gonna start doing, we were gonna take deeds to the.
So that's all the extra stuff that's down here, I like all of this, plus all of this stuff. So you can waive an annexation fee, anything has to come with a waiver. We waived the annexation fee, they handled the deed, they handled the milar, and. I'm just saying, in, in the last year, that's what we've done in annexation.
Really?
The planning board.
Do you remember the, who we did it for?
No, but I can pull out my notes.
Well, it's probably, I mean, we want to have the fee, and then if we decide to waive or something, then we can, but.
Because it was a simple.
Yeah.
But now, okay, so if somebody comes in with an annexation, so we're gonna have a discussion whether we're going to waive the fee or not?
It was, it was a simple, it wasn't like we're gonna take this piece of land and annex it over here so then we can get that piece of land and annex it over here. And then we're gonna move this whole boundary over here. It was a simple, I have these two parcels of land and I'm just removing this lot line and creating one parcel of land.
Which is what we saw on that map we had here earlier. Although it doesn't have that, right? If you own both parcels of land, do you have to join them?
No, you don't, no.
Yeah, I mean, some of the towns had boundary line adjustment, but.
So the boundary line adjustment, voluntary merger, annexation, and again, they can be very simple. It's still in the tax maps.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't waive fees for anybody either. I don't care whether it's a line or a whole subdivision, I wouldn't waive the fee. Because I think what happens is it, it, it convolutes it for future boards, you know, you have this board, you have a bunch of people here, their friends come in, and then the next thing you know, oh, I'm gonna waive your fee because, you know, you're, it's not that big a deal. I think you just, that's too great in areas, the fee is the fee.
It's the fee, it's an application fee.
Because then the next person's gonna come in with a simple thing and they're gonna say, why aren't you waiving my fee? You waived your fee for Jones, you're not waiving my fee for Smith, how come?
The waiver should be because there's an area of the parcel that creates some kind of a condition that we need to waive, not the fee.
Well, typically waivers in, like lot line adjustments or waivers like that are typically done when the town wants to take some land and they pay for that. They, they do all of that, so that's usually when the fees are waived, since the town is involved in the transaction. So if somebody's giving up right away, right, they need a new boundary line adjustment, they're not gonna pay for that, the town's asking them, can we have an extra 10 feet of right away? That's usually when you waive a fee.
Yeah, we, we need an easements. Yeah. We, we need an easement, we need a.
Exactly. Yep.
So we'll leave it.
So I'll clean this up.
This is good work.
I may find a small, a few other small towns and then I'll probably have to talk to zoning and just verify.
What the fees are.
That that's what you, this.
Because having talked to zoning, they haven't charged any appearance fees ever. So the current group hasn't. Anyway, we'll leave it then. Sounds good. Very good.
All right, site plan review.
Yeah.
So we have one. It's done. It's contained in here. And can somebody tell me who is on the board of adjustment?
Jason Ruth.
Jason Ruth.
That's zoning.
Jasper.
That's zoning.
Board of adjustment. Isn't that what they always zone?
Zoning.
Yeah, zoning board of adjustment.
So are they, are they going out and doing inspections? Is the select board going out and doing inspections? Because this says.
Select board doesn't.
So the problem that we have is you can't, we can't write a site plan review when we don't have the authority to review it. In other words, this document from nineteen eighty-nine has to be revised by these guys. Because this document is supposed to be the zoning ordinance. But the problem with it is, when you get into the mud here on page sixteen through twenty, this is a site plan review stuff. This isn't anything to do with zoning. It doesn't belong in here. And the other problem that you have is that this document explains everything you're supposed to do to approve a house that we don't do. We don't send the select board out to review the site. So when somebody comes, the process right now, if you read this document, somebody comes in with a plan, you're supposed to take that plan and give it to the select board. The select board's supposed to go out with a site review before they issue the building permit. They're supposed to make sure the setbacks are right. They're supposed to visualize and see everything. That's your site plan review. That's, that, that according to our nineteen, August eighth nineteen eighty-nine ordinance, the select board is responsible or not the planning board. So until we revise this, you can't do a site plan review. You don't have authority to do it. It's the select board does it according to this ordinance.
Okay, but if I read the RSA correctly, the only people authorized to change that document has to originate with a planning board.
Right? Correct, because the planning board created this document.
Right.
So my, my question to you is, do you want me to revise this and make this the revised proposal? Because I'm gonna split this document. I'm gonna put a site plan stop to us and I'm gonna take it out of the zoning ordinance because the zoning ordinance should only have zoning. So in other words, we've got stuff in here that talks about certificate of compliance. Seventeen. Certificate of compliance. Go ahead, I got. The select, the selectmen shall view the area site of each proposed change or extension of the use of any lot or structure and shall review all plans, maps, diagrams describing the proposed use. And if such proposed use isn't permitted under this ordinance, they shall issue a certificate of compliance. Apple fee. So that means that when I built my barn, I should have come down here with the plan. I should have submitted it like I did for the bill. Board should have said, okay, guys, we have to schedule a meeting because there's gonna be one of us. We have to schedule the meeting. We have to go out to the property. We have to review the plan before we issue the permit. That's what this says. And that isn't done. What's done here is it comes in in a folder. These guys sign it. Nobody knows what's going on and it goes out. So what, what we need to do is we need to, to, we need to, and this is gonna have to go before the voters. This, this is nothing we can do in a meeting.
No, no, no. Any changes to the zoning ordinance have to be voted.
Yep, has to be voted. So in order to split this, we have to do this in March. And we have to revise it to be what we're actually going to. Because you can't charge a permit fee or you can't charge a, a site plan fee if there's not gonna be anybody to review it. So the, the, the real issue is these pages fifteen through the end really should go into a site plan review now. Which I can write that out. That's easy. And then the rest of this should be the ordinance for zoning of what our zoning regulations are. And those zoning regulations should be, you know, this area's on this, this area's on that.
All right. So I agree. Let's not do something half-assed.
Right.
Split it.
Yeah.
Now, there was a, way back when, and I've still got the pages with red markings all over. The zoning people wanted to change all sorts of definitions.
Yeah.
Which aren't gonna get done by. So what we'll end up doing is having the zoning ordinance with work to be done. I mean, the word chattel is in there for God's sake. That's gotta get, you know.
Chatter is actually a real word. Chatter is a real word.
I know it's a real word.
But it's, it's, it's an ancient word.
It's an ancient word.
Personal property.
Yeah, well, okay. Used to mean women too, so as you well know. So we would, we would leave what's there, which isn't particularly to our liking, which we would get to later, but we would split the.
This can be voted on at the March town meeting. So we should work the zoning board. And spread it and give that to them to revise.
And Jason said he was gonna get to it.
Yep.
And if you have to see any of it.
I can sit down with Jason and we can hammer this out, but I think that for the site plan review, I want to take the last ten pages and really go through it and kind of pull that out to a site plan review process that the planning board's gonna conduct. Because we really should be the people that go out and review a site. We used to do site walks all the time in my other life. And sometimes you'd bring a select board member with you because they want to see what's going on, mostly commercial development and stuff. But this, this process isn't being done. So we can't add a site plan document when, because somebody's gonna come in and say, okay, what do I do? Is this is in, this is in law. This is a fact right now. This is, this is the law of the town. So now I have to do a site plan review too. That means that the planning board and the select board's gonna come up. And there's also fees that are called out in here that we don't charge.
So my, my one question is that according to the state hour saves, site plans are not required on single family and duplexes. So anything you want to do on residential, single family duplex are not a site plan. So your barn is building permit under the purview of the select court. The site plan review should be pulled out for somebody who wants to turn a duplex into a multifamily. Or wants to put a barn in a residential and turn that into a skating rink. And have it be a commercial enterprise.
We don't have any definite, we don't have any separation right now of, you basically do commercial all over town.
Right. We don't have a commercial zone. You would have to change the use. You would have to come before the zoning department, the zoning adjustments, and you would have to go in and get a variance. But so the cell towers. You can put a cell tower on your land, you have to lease property. You can lease property. It's a change in use.
That was in here. I thought.
Yeah, change in use. You can't change the use.
Yeah, I've seen the.
Any kind of use. It's first off, it says you couldn't build anything higher than the steep of church.
Well, I, I like to use my barn as an example because it's new, you know, within the last year of the system here. Right here and it just out of, just, just for, just for, just for giggles, you've got, you've got a parking regulation in here. So residential use parking is three off-street spaces for each dwelling unit. And then commercial use is one square foot of off-street parking space for every square foot of floor space. One nine. So ones, think about this, one square foot of off-street parking space for every square foot of floor space. So I built a forty-eight hundred square foot barn. I need forty-eight hundred square feet of off-street parking.
Yeah, you would have to come in with your site plan and ask for a waiver of that off. And it'd be easy to get the waiver from the planning board and be able to show that you don't need all of that parking.
So the only thing we do on our building permit is we say we're thirty-five feet from the lot line.
Yes.
And then the select board looks at it, the guy checks the box, yes, and everybody goes, okay. And then you find out a month later that the lot line was here and he put his house here. And he goes, well, I measured it with a tape. It's thirty-five feet from this corner. Yeah, but it's only fifteen from that one.
Well, I measured it from the center line of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got that. And I spoke to the guy in Connecticut and guess what? They gave the waiver. Anyway, but he, he sent a map in, center line of the road. Oh, well, that's what they do in Connecticut. Yeah, well.
So I, I think that the goal of, of the committee is to develop a, a system that works. Because right now the system's not, it's not working. And, and I think that getting Jason to do some inspections for us is a great idea. Because really shouldn't issue a certificate of occupancy because he comes in and says, here, here, it's done. And we don't really even issue certificates of occupancy, ever. There's no C O on my house. I looked. There's no C O on A house. And that's in here.
Oh.
Supposed to pay two bucks and the select board's supposed to sign it. Nobody does that. So.
Not here and there, but kind of related, I found in this for the fees in nineteen ninety, they were trying to change the building permit fee to make it a, I guess it's five dollars supposedly, but it was gonna be an A, a B, a C, like twenty-five.
Yeah, I've never seen that. Yeah, they wrote it down.
That may be the less.
So the document, this document needs to be revised. Site plan review, which is already in here, needs to be pulled out. And then select. That, and then they have to approve to put it on for the warrant for the voters.
So I, it's already in here and it's been approved.
Why change it?
Why can't we just revise it? Why does it have to go to town meeting?
Because in reading this, I don't, half of the stuff belongs in your zoning ordinance.
It doesn't. It needs to become the site plan rather than the zoning ordinance, but we.
And some of the stuff is antiquated. Needs to be changed.
If a town attorney look at it, would he say we already have the site plan and all we have to do is revise it so that it goes to the proper board? And then the board can revise it or do we need to start from scratch?
My off-the-cuff opinion is that this is a major alteration.
It would have to go to town.
I, I think for full transparency, I think you're better off doing it that way. Because you're gonna make a major change to the system.
My understanding is any change to that has to go to town meeting.
Yeah, any change, any change. First, we were able to change, make a change for our regulation, public hearing, anything there, according to ours.
So if we do the revision of that, if we do what you're talking about where that gets revised, section gets pulled out. So then you have the zoning clean on, and what it's supposed to be, and that goes through the process. Then for the site plan, is that something we can do or does it also get approved by the town?
It has to get approved by the town.
Right, but all, all changes to the zoning ordinance start here.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I mean, it's not something we can do in one shebang where we say, we're revising that and that language is getting out. And if that passes, then this language is getting approved as its own. I mean, it's gonna be.
Two warrants. It would be a warrant to revise the town of Croydon zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the revisions, you would have the old this with the red lines of the new. And then there would be another warrant which would say, uh, town of Croydon, Croydon, planning board, site plan review ordinance. It would be an ordinance. This is our ordinance. This is our site plan review. This is our process. This is our fee schedule. That all comes into it. And this is the process of approval. And you guys are gonna have to say, hey, um, we don't have anybody doing inspections. I want the system to stay, you can stay, we want the system to stay the same way. We'll document it the same way, but it's not, that's not what this says. So you, we have to figure out who's gonna do the site plan. And my, my proposal would be that at the planning board's discretion, they can do the site plan review, which, or site review, which means we would go to the site and review the site to the plan. And that, that is good checks and balance because I've had, had many people have come in in my past life and said, oh, I want to do this and this and this. And the planning board's gone, gone, looked at it and go, hey, I know that area. I don't know how you're gonna do this. We're gonna do a site. And it's a posted meeting because the whole board is there and the public is invited to go and, and. Public comment, but the public can go. But you have to post these things so that the public knows where you are.
Where you are.
Right? So that was what I was waiting for, for the direction of the, of, of the committee to say, hey, yeah, right. We gotta, we gotta pull these apart and then I'll pull them apart and I'll start writing some stuff and I can get some stuff to you guys for the next meeting.
We're gonna start getting some pushback from people. Divided in thirty-five feet back in the line.
Yeah.
Okay, so that just gives, to get be, beware that that, some of that's gonna come.
I don't think we're gonna do anything that isn't already here. The problem is that we're gonna select boards of the past. Select boards, I don't know even if the select board nineteen eighty-nine, I mean.
Well, and planning boards of the past.
Planning boards of the past. It's like this goes back forty years. So maybe for a decade, the planning board, the select board was going out doing site, how many plans do we have a year? Right? It wasn't a big deal for the, you know, back forty years ago.
And, right.
And somehow, somehow the select board fell off the train on this. Oh, okay.
Town reports, there was a building.
So the select board can delegate to the building inspector, go do this.
Right, but they, they get away with the position of building inspector. He retired. He was actually on the select board. And then it fell to the way side.
Well, you're right. If, if you go back, remember I had the minutes that Willie had on the back of the. We're meeting two or three times a year. If they were building three houses a year, that's a lot. And you're right, it just, it wasn't much development. So. Nobody's really gotten to.
And, and I think the purpose of us doing this is just to have a fail-safe. You know, if, if somebody comes in and says, I want to build thirty houses. Because right now we don't have site plan review. We don't have this, we don't have that. And we're not trying to make people's lives difficult. So I don't think we're gonna get a lot of pushback. What we're trying to do is we're trying to protect public safety. Because if you have somebody coming in building ADUs or building other things and, you know, the electrician's not right and, or something else and, and people get hurt, that is our responsibility.
Right. We can't, the, the cell cars, so if somebody wants to come in and put in another cell tower, we need the site plan portion of it to really be able to say, okay, in order to cite it properly, we have to see the plans. We have to be able to say the fall zone is a hundred and twenty-five percent of power height. We want to stealth it. We, we just want to make sure the fall zone is proper. If you don't have the ice damage. You know, Google it. Those towers fall.
They do. The other problem with them, some of them require the red beacon lights.
Yes.
So there was a, there was a situation where the cell tower went up over here and somebody's house was up over here and the red light shined right in their bedroom window. So when you're doing site plan review, light pollution is a huge thing. So like my barn, Fred lives across the street. I'm gonna put down lighting on that barn, but it's gonna go off at nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night. Because it's light pollution after a certain hour. You know, you've got a bedroom window here and you've got a big lit up barn here. That's not, that's not cool. That's, that's a big deal. When we put lights in on fields, we had to, we, we, we put them up and we had twenty people at the next meeting because the lights went on. So much light pollution back. We had to build, we had to have custom made shields put in to block the lights from going backwards. And because it was lighting the whole road behind them. And the people, hey, I can't sleep. You've got light coming in my window.
Well, you put in a solar field. You have to cite it so that you don't get the sun out of the solar field.
So all those things are, are important, but I don't think we're gonna have people in here screaming, I want to build, you know, thirty-five feet and that's it. Because most people are gonna follow rules and I think most people are all complete.
Now, in, in terms of this thing up on the hill here, the red light does shine in somebody's window. It happens to be Houston, Florida. You stand in front of this garage, you can't even see the color. This bedroom window, I guess, the light goes, so we had to go buy drapes to save the sleep.
The other thing that I want.
Well, yeah, he got the money for the thing.
The NSA doesn't cover that having an ordinance will cover. It's that, you know, it's been two years since that was built.
I agree.
And they're still.
And people are grumbling.
And now on, and now. And on, and on, and on.
Well, it's, the fire department's on it, yeah.
And they should have been on there as soon as it was built, and that's the other requirement required.
You can have it, I can point.
So, okay, so we're agree that we're gonna, um, and you're saying you don't think it's gonna be a major, something that can be done to get us, we can do this in March. I, yeah, yeah, we could get this, we could, we could pull this apart and get it ready for you guys. It's up to this, I mean, I can get something drafted up in October that we can give to the select board to decide what they wanna do, have the zoning board look at, I mean, we have a lot of people, but we have to all get a sign off.
The zoning board is scheduled to meet in October, October eighteenth, if they, right now, they have nothing on their agenda. So we could put something on their agenda.
Yeah.
Let me do that.
Yeah. And I think that would be a pretty good idea to do. So let me talk to Jason, and then let me, um, let me do some wordsmithing here. And do a word salad and see what I can, see what I can come up with that, that doesn't take away the spirit of the original ordinance. Because we are Croydon, we're not, you know, Clamor.
Nah.
All right, so I, I have the last piece, which is the additional dwelling units, um, reading, as I start off, just saying the fact that there's been a lot of pressure on affordable housing nationally. Um, in two thousand eight, legislature, and signed by the governor, RSA six seventy-four, section fifty-nine, there's wording in there that said, states shall provide reasonable and realistic opportunities for the development of affordable, over towards housing. Okay, so we are gonna make a change to our zoning ordinance. To, to be in this, to comply with the spirit of what they want. Major. You know, building of, of large affordable housing units, such as the thing that went up across the street from Shaw's down in New York, is unrealistic for town of Croydon, given infrastructure, which is basically sewer street. So that's, that's not something we're gonna be working on. However, we're, we're trying, and we'll go on, we'll say, to the point that the purpose of regulations following, in my safety hazard, promote public health, health care, prevent water and land pollution, preserve rural residential character of the town. Just hope that these regulations will allow more flexibility in household living arrangements and the opportunity for rental units to provide affordable housing. Then, then you go to, what are the specifics of the regulation? Most of these come out of RSA six seventy-four. These, by the way, come pretty much out of the existing, uh, the, the existing RSA.
Six seventy-four, seventy-two through seventy-three.
Okay, seventy-two, yeah, it's right up there at the top. By the way, I stole that off, thank you. And these are things we've agreed on, we, we've agreed it can be detached, okay? An ADU is not permitted a lot within existing ADU, two-family or multifamily dwelling. Maybe no larger than seven hundred and fifty square feet. And no more than two bedrooms occupied by more than five unrelated individuals. Police that.
Yeah, exactly, I was just gonna say, why is that there?
Why even have that there?
I, I wouldn't.
Just leave it at two bedrooms.
I would say two bedrooms.
Period.
All right, so let me ask a question on the current bedroom ADU. Why two bedrooms and seven hundred and fifty square feet?
No more than two bedrooms. Simply, seven, seven hundred and fifty square feet, I can't imagine putting two bedrooms in seven hundred and fifty square feet.
We have people living in sheds in town.
Yep.
I know.
So my concern with seven hundred and fifty square feet and two bedrooms is everybody takes their garage and puts a second story on it, and the next thing you know, we got twelve new kids showing up at school. Because that's the problem, it's in septic tanks, and it isn't, isn't water or infrastructure, it's kids. Because it's eighteen thousand dollars a piece, which is eighteen cents on tax rate. So, ten kids come in, it's a dollar eighty. And that's serious stuff, because the majority of people in town couldn't afford a twenty percent increase in taxes. So, do we wanna stick with two bedrooms, or do we wanna say that an ADU can be one bedroom? I thought it was, I thought an ADU was designed for mother-in-law, father-in-law, grandfather, grandmother, right? Son who moved back home, right?
In order to utilize the ADUs so that we can be compliant with the workforce housing, we have to have an allowance for a rental to someone who has children.
Okay.
So, we have to be able to show that Croydon is following or is being able to provide some form of workforce housing. And we can do that by allowing for ADUs.
And that satisfies the statute?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that is the requirement for the two bedrooms?
That is why we put in the two bedrooms.
Okay.
Yes, it's gonna bring in some people that have kids, but I don't, uh. I think, knowing that they're going to share utilities, and they're going to share septic. Is going to perhaps make it so that the two bedrooms are just, might not, they're gonna have to fix the septic, they're gonna have to upgrade the septic system.
Does that say that in here? Sewer disposal, okay, good.
They'll have to comply, so if they have a three-bedroom home, and they have a septic system for a four-bedroom home, they can put in an ADU for.
One bedroom, right.
Or they upgrade their septic.
I, I'm fine with the two bedrooms with the septic, no septic in there.
It is, it is in the statute, it says, and this is paragraph nine, municipality may not limit accessory dwelling, you have to only one.
Got it.
But now we need the requirements for the workforce housing. But it's, it's that, that septic, that if it was municipal sewer and water, we'd be, um, having to think of a way to, to do an impact.
Could you like email that workforce housing thing, or something? Cause I keep hearing.
Don't you have, don't you have six seventy-four? Wait, you're the.
Uh, is that what it's in?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, no, I'll look that up then.
What I did is I made a index of six seventy-four, there's just so damn much stuff in there to just try and find it.
Okay.
Here. Take this, I have it on.
No, I mean, I can turn them on copies, but.
Uh, going through this, uh, AD, owner occupied, that's the other, the limiter, if you will, um. Okay, and you have to acknowledge owner occupancy.
So one of them has.
Yeah.
I've got it covered. Manufactured homes, okay, here's the, and I've had discussion with Kim about this, manufactured homes would be something, it's mobile, which I guess would include tiny, correct, we've agreed on that. So, it's gotta be sitting on a foundation of some sort. Of, you know, a slab or whatever.
You can put a tiny house on a slab.
Yeah, and then it's okay, then it's okay.
Roll it in and put it on a slab.
Yeah. You know, let's share a common driveway, have an adequate off-street parking for those five vehicles, do we, is that part of the?
Well, what did we just read, the zoning ordinance about residential parking?
Yeah. Yeah, I, should we, we just say it has to have a common driveway and let them figure out where they're gonna put the car?
And so, the only, the only, going back up here, your building permit and a certificate of occupancy are required, we don't have a system in Croydon for a certificate of occupancy.
Will we hit it after you're done with your site plan, Jim?
No, because we don't have anybody that's qualified to sign off on it.
That's going out.
I thought that was something Jason.
Jason's gonna sign off on, I inspected for fire, or I inspected a gas line.
Oh, health, safety.
He can't sign off on a, typically, the, um, the building inspector would do that, he would sign, and we don't have, we don't have a building inspector.
Oh, should we just, uh, okay, just say, a building permit is.
So, one of the things that we should talk about, um, and not, not to muddy your water here.
That's fine.
One of the things we should talk about is, in the select board should consider, with the, with the few developments we have a year, the few buildings that happen a year, may not be a bad idea to have a certificate of occupancy fee that is related to hiring a state inspector to come down and provide you the CO. So in other words, the select board contracts with a building inspector from the state, they have a septic, electric, everybody, and they're, they're all jacks-of-all-trade, they're, it's like notaries, they, they run around and they do different things in towns, and you could, you could contract a building inspector to come out and give a final CO. Which means they would go in and they would test the polarity of the circuitry, they would test the water, make sure the water's working, they'd make sure that the smoke alarms are there, the carbon monoxide detectors are there, that the electrical panel is labeled and is correct, everything to be life and safety for that house, they'll go in and inspect it, and then they'll issue the CO. That is a, that would be a service we would provide, and you could charge for it. So, if the, if the state inspector was a hundred and fifty dollars a visit, you could charge two hundred dollars for a, for a certificate of occupancy. And that would be the final, that would be the final, the final step. I don't think we can add it today, now, I think it's something we could do next year, but I don't think it's, I think it would muddy the water more.
Okay.
Because we don't have anybody lined up, and it's gonna take time to get that system in place, and find out if we're even capable of doing that, if the state is even still doing, or state certified inspector.
Isn't it in this?
Other question for Ed, you guys have a, you have fees, you've got, obviously, charge fees at the dump, right?
Yeah, there's dump fees for tires, to spend.
And how do you get those, how do you get those?
I couldn't tell you, the fee schedule's been around longer than mine have.
But I mean, if you wanted to change them.
But it's, it's voted on, we.
By the town or by you guys?
Us, by the select, we just up the price for tires.
Okay, so, so you don't have to bring it before the town?
No.
Okay. No, I mean, get that here.
No, it's voted on.
Good. So, yeah, so whatever fees you're talking about to that, these guys could come up with a number.
Yep.
Without having to go back, again, because the fee schedules we're talking about have to go back for.
Right now, it's in there for two bucks.
They can do something off the books, not off, not off the books.
Yeah, it's in that for two bucks. CO is in here for two dollars, but, you know, that, that is based upon, basically, coming in and saying, we're all done building, can you sign this? Yep, here you go, all right, two dollars.
All right, so I'll take certificate of occupancy out for now.
Yep.
Uh, take out five bedrooms out for now. Am I missing any items?
Oh, five unrelated individuals, yeah, and then certificate of occupancy, okay.
And the actual, what will actually go into the zoning ordinance is just the lower part.
Yep.
Article four, A, definition.
Perfect.
Kim had expressed earlier, too, a problem with Airbnbs, but I don't think that's something we, we would be in position to. And hopefully, owner occupancy will keep it lit on it.
I think the owner occupancy is, I mean, right now, you're writing the ordinance, so if you wanted to say anything about it, this is the time to do it, but I think the owner occupancy is going to create the buffer for an Airbnb, if they.
How so?
Well, so if somebody, if somebody wants to Airbnb it, that's, that's theirs, they can do it, they've met all the necessary requirements. If they start having a bunch of college kids taking up the ADU and partying at two o'clock in the morning, then it's on them, because it's bothering them, to go out and knock on their door and kick the heck out of the ADU. So, that's usually what happens when somebody, some neighbor has a problem with an Airbnb. Somebody gets a little rowdy and rambunctious because they're partying, um, after skiing or after a day on the lake. But having the owner occupancy, having it on the same parcel, sharing the same utilities, and septic will keep everything close enough.
So you're suggesting that someone's gonna build an ADU for the purposes of Airbnb-ing it?
If they, if they do, I, I think that the owner occupation that's required
Yep.
will keep them on top of.
Yeah, well, there's eleven there.
It's their own problem.
They're living there, they're going to.
They won't, they won't, they won't rent a, they won't rent a lot.
They won't rent to the Waffles.
And my understanding is up at Indian Point now, and you probably know about this, is there a couple of Airbnbs up there that are causing problems, really, with no owner occupancy?
Well, I don't think you can limit Airbnbs, um, if somebody wants to rent their house out.
Right, but the people, but there's no owner occupancy, so these people are doing things like, um, well, not, not, you know, like, they're crossing people's private property, get to the lake, and it was a list crap.
But that's a landowner dispute.
That is, and then something that's like.
Landowner.
I mean, I guess the only question I have, when in terms of the same stuff, is like, I mean, how do you enforce an owner occupancy?
It's, so there's, there's a D, you put it on the D, it's a D restriction, it's just like when you're living on a class six road. I live on a class six road, I know that the town is not going to maintain the road, I have to get my children to school, blow the fog.
Okay, so what happens when mom and dad live in the house, okay? Mom and dad are the owners of the house.
Right.
They build an ADU for their daughter, Charlotte, Charlotte lives in the ADU, mom and dad retire, they move to Florida, and Chuck and Stan, their two sons, move into the house. They're no longer the owner, they're no longer owner occupied.
Right.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna police that?
Well, once they move to Florida, then the ADU is going, they're gonna have to change the ownership of the house.
Who's gonna do that? Nobody.
I know.
Well, I mean, I guess it's like mostly everything, there is none, but it's just a.
So your control, just, 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 so everyone understands, your control of an ADU is based upon, um, Ed Spiker owns this house and is gonna build an ADU today. That's it, after that.
So if we do the detached ADUs, because we're trying to give people more flexibility, and we're trying to create the workforce housing availability, then we're going to have this issue with the D restrictions. If we say, no detached ADUs, and the only way you can have an ADU is to build it on your house and attach it to your house, then we don't have to worry about it, because.
In my past life, we only approved ADUs attached, because it's much more difficult.
Yep.
And much more traditionally used as the definition of an AD.
An in-law.
Mother-law, father-in-law, grandfather, grandmother. And typically, those were, like I said, raise the garage, put a second story in the garage, and build your apartment there.
Breeze way.
Breeze way. Yeah, so, do we wanna say that we're not gonna allow detached?
Well.
No, I'm, I think you're gonna get a lot more pushback if you say that.
Commodate the state in terms of workforce housing, so.
The bill to have a detached ADU be a legal use by anyone without a permit in any, any town was lost by, by two percent, so it will go on valid again for next year. It's, it's gonna happen. We either be inflexible in our regulations for that, or we do our best to try to I don't, I don't know how people be flexible in some way for it.
Where did I, I didn't hear about the detached and.
I mean, I gotta read this workforce housing more, three or four times.
Because somewhere, somewhere near, they talked about detached. Yeah, it was only attached.
Way back then, like last fall, I remember the discussion.
We don't, we don't have to allow detached, right now.
We don't have to allow it, right?
We can, we can write this so that it.
What do you wanna do?
Makes no difference to me, I don't plan on building.
Yeah.
I mean, my only feeling is like, we can think whatever we think, but it's more thinking of the public.
Says that there's gonna be a hell of a lot more pushback if you restrict to attached. That said, that's the more traditional way it would've been done. So.
Chris, I'm sorry, you're.
No, I agree, I think that it comes down to, if you wanna have a, how much of a battle potentially? Cause it could be, people just don't want the, no detached. And I mean, I guess you can push it forward, but it might fail, and then you have nothing, or you could, but you don't know that until you do a public hearing, or.
That's right, right.
And if we don't have the detached ADUs, then we really don't have any way to be in compliance with the workforce housing.
So you have to have detached ADUs in order to be compliant with workforce housing?
No, but you're gonna have. We can, we can have an apartment house.
I don't want that either.
Okay. I didn't.
Take the detached ADU and go to apartment house.
Yeah, I think the big picture is, who knows, by the time this even goes to the town meeting, it already may be getting signed and alter that, make it attached, or.
No, I think.
That's where it's gonna go.
I think the 750 square feet is fine, and if you wanna do detached, you could do detached, but just bear in mind that, that comes with a whole set of problems.
No, it's very difficult, and I know municipalities are having a hard time with that compliance, but all we can do is put it in there, and then if someone is not in compliance with it, at least we have our regulations at stake that it must be owner occupied, and we can go and knock, go and say, this is, you're not in compliance.
So the, so the workforce housing requirement is broad-based across every single municipality in the state?
Right, but it's not a requirement, they go in there and they're wording of it, where's that? You've got my thing on workforce housing, what is, what is it, what's the paragraph?
58 to 61.
58, 61?
Section 58, yeah.
You can get some weasel words they put in there, and there should be.
Yes.
Well, I just, yeah, I just don't understand how that state can require us to have workforce housing when we don't have the police department, we don't have the fire department, we don't have water, we don't have sewer.
Okay, here, in every, in every municipality that exercises the power to adopt land use ordinances and regulations, such or conditions, regulations shall, shall provide reasonable and realistic opportunities for the development of workforce housing here, including rental multifamily housing. In order to provide such opportunities, lot size, overall density requirements for workforce housing shall be reasonable.
We can say that we created the detached ADU so that there are rental opportunities available. That's as reasonable as we can get, because we don't have water, we don't have sewer, we don't have, we don't have the availability for school, we don't have commercial entities where there's, there's places people can get up immediately to work, so we're doing the best that we can as a bedroom community to provide some form of workforce housing.
Okay. We can take that position.
And we are, yeah, we are complying with the spirit of the law.
I would take a different position, but take that position. I'd tell the state to go pound sand. We're 800 people with a 565,000 municipal budget that just had a $2 million road problem.
Yes.
You want us to provide workforce housing? Provide us a little more money for our kids. I, I mean, seriously, that's the, that's the bait.
Well, the other debate, I guess, is if we don't have anything, then.
We don't have anything.
Wild, wild west.
Right.
I mean, which it'll be anyway, but.
Then you get the tiny house problem that was occurring up on Rocky Mountain.
And people living in sheds.
And people in your sheds.
No, I like, I like the regulations for the septic, because that's gonna cause a whole bunch of different problems, because most of our septic plans, it's a three-bedroom house, it's designed for a three-bedroom septic.
Yeah.
So I think that we're protected on a couple of levels here, and I'm comfortable. The last thing I wanna do is I don't wanna see 50 people build 50 ADUs, and because they want rental income. Because what are we in? We're in a housing crisis.
Yes.
We're in a housing crisis because of, of, a great part of it is Airbnbs, because people have retained homes instead of selling them.
Yes.
Because they're renting them.
They're renting them out.
They've retained their homes because they refinanced their houses to 2.5%.
Correct, 100%.
Go under 7.5.
Yep.
And no one's moving. And it's a, anyway, but I think this, this is good. Yeah, and it's, as we all know, it's just you can't cover all the bases.
No.
You gotta open a table.
Well, and we have the public hearing, so.
People can say their piece about it.
All right, so we're gonna leave this, I think we're pretty well done ADUs, Chris has done a hell of a good job with the fees here.
So we could move forward on those.
And you, but you, yeah, but you've got a task in front of you, and you're waiting to hear from state, correct?
Right, so do we wanna try to meet again in September in order to get an answer from Kim, or do we want just an email out?
If we can get it, and you have some idea of how big a problem.
This would be March anyway. This wouldn't be something we, public hearings, so it really doesn't apply now, we take site plan off of.
Well, I think the fees is.
The fees and the ADUs and that stuff, you can do at a public hearing, right?
Yep.
Okay.
This is gonna have to go before the voters.
Yeah, but that'll have to have a public hearing before it can get.
Yeah, but that's gonna be.
Yeah.
So the fees are town meeting.
Well, fees are town meeting, so what can we do with just a public, two public hearings?
ADU.
Yeah?
We can do the ADU.
And cell tower.
And cell tower.
Okay.
And then maybe this would be at the same public hearing as that, because it kind of, because it may actually, with the zoning fees.
Would all come together.
Yeah. Okay, well, okay, I got the, the schedule here. I'm of the understanding the select board have a drop dead date in terms of when you guys publish the, the town report, and then nothing can change after, in terms of filing motions and stuff like that, and my question to you is, what is the drop dead date? And I thought.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, that's.
The clerk would know.
Right, the warrant, but that'll, that'll be a warrant item.
That will be a warrant item, so yeah, so we have to get, it would have to be done in September, yeah.
It has to be done in November, September.
Yep. Yep, so, and there's two required, I think, two public hearings.
Not, no, no.
You have one public hearing.
You can get away with one if there's no objection.
If it means a whole big objection and make you have to change.
Change anything.
But I feel like zoning regs.
Standard change.
Probably should be conservative.
If you wanna follow the spirit of the RSA and be fully transparent, you hold two public hearings, and even if you just, I open the public hearing, motion to close the public hearing.
Yep.
It's done. And, and then nobody can say you didn't have two.
I didn't get my chance to speak because I missed the first one, I was waiting for the second one.
So.
So we're gonna go forward with the three, and then we're gonna, yep, come on board as soon as you can.
Yep.
Yep. Get together with Jason, I will. Does that mean we have another meeting? There are good defendants in email saying I got the stuff for the state, and I'll have it, my ducks in a row by October, whatever the date of the meeting, and we will hear from Mr. Morgan if that'll be a problem.
I think, I think Larry, what you can do is you can, you can, you can have a regular meeting on, on the first Wednesday of October, and then at that meeting, if, if that's all set, your ADUs are all set, we can have a public hearing two weeks after that.
Okay.
And then get you done before you leave, yeah. No, fees are gonna be.
I mean, we could start the public hearing.
We could have a public, we could have a public hearing.
Just to get feedback, if we're doing it anyway, but.
I, I thought we were pretty well agreed on.
No, but I'm just saying if it has to go to, to the town in March, then it's.
We don't wanna have a public hearing on the fees in October and then have the second one in January, I think that would be too big of a gap.
Wait a minute, well, we're gonna have a public hearing in October for the three items, and then we'll have another public hearing, which will address what he's.
Well, the fees have to go to the town meeting, the public has to vote on the fees.
So they're basically with his.
Well, so does, so does the change in the ADU definition, that has to go there too, because it's, we're changing the zoning ordinance.
Right, we can have, we can bring what we're doing to add the ADUs and the cell towers in at any time, so the definitions just have to go, because, okay, we made these ordinances voted on, they're gonna be here, here's the changes to the definitions, they're just housekeeping, because we have these.
The RSA says any changes to the zoning ordinances have to go on, as a warrant item, correct?
Right, they're a housekeeping one.
I don't care if it's housekeeping or not, it's still gonna go.
So in the end, both of those things are actually gonna be tied up into the zone, I mean, it's basically all one thing.
So I thought we could do, I thought the ADU definitions were not, were outside of purview of town meeting.
No, they're, they're.
Change to the zoning ordinance, we are, we are amended the zoning ordinance. And a hearing, and a warrant, and a warrant item.
Same thing with the cell tower.
Okay.
Public hearing.
And then a warrant, and same thing with the fees.
But in reality, if you're doing a warrant with the revisions of the zoning, then that revision and that revision would go, it would be one revision is what's gonna be ahead of the town meeting.
Tell me, Danny, right, we are, we are, as a planning board, proposing changes to the zoning ordinance, that'll be voting item, okay? Yes or no?
And then it's all in there.
So you take the whole thing as a package, or you, you say no, and then you're gonna have five resignations, and you can do your own goddamn plan.
Okay, public forum?
Just for clarity, the first public hearing, which could possibly be in October, don't know if it was decided or not, we've talked around it.
Right.
It's for ADU, cell tower, what else?
So, no.
I thought Joe said that we can change the fees by a two-public hearing process.
We can, for the, for the, for the subdivision regulations, please.
Okay, if it's, if it's a subdivision regulation, we can change.
We can change it.
Without, right?
Then I would.
No, no, excuse me, any fee, right? Any fee.
Now, those have to go through a warrant, I, they do.
Okay, so basically, none of it could be done till March, and it will be one package, and then the fees.
But they all have to go through the public hearing processes.
Yeah, but I would think that here, public hearing has to be arranged around what the intended, like, warrant is gonna be, so if it's gonna be the revision of the zoning ordinance, then it's gonna be whatever we're doing and whatever the zoning were, so that's gonna be kind of a big hearing, and then the fees would maybe be its own.
Means own warrant item?
Well, I would think it would be its own warrant, yeah.
Good, I mean, like, there's no reason that it wouldn't be, but.
So Chris, it says, best practices and tips for zoning amendments, right?
Yep.
So limit the number of amendments brought forward, too many can be confusing and difficult to keep straight, using the chance for passage. Compose any proposed amendment so that each amendment addresses a single topic or section of the ordinance, so we wanna make sure that we keep everything separate, we're gonna have four warrant articles, we'll have four warrant articles, ADU, cell tower, site plan, fees, four warrant articles.
So we're not, we can't blam them together?
Nope. Take advantage of RSA 67612 and hold first public hearing for zoning amendments as early as possible, 120 days before town meeting. So that's your best bet, 120 days before town meeting.
So by December 1st.
Yep, do it then, and that's, that way they're done in consecutive order and as.
No, November 1st.
As possible.
But we can have a public hearing where we can conclude all four, three out of the four.
Sure.
Yeah, yes, yes.
So you're, okay, so now.
So potentially, that would be early November, late October, when we're doing that, is that what I'm thinking? So we have our October meeting, try to finalize this stuff, and either later in October or early.
Well, if the three of us can get our ducks in a row, and, and, and so we have to wait for Jim, but that's fine, and he, then he can do it later, as long as he can meet, drop that date or whatever, I think we can.
Well, plus, if you're, it's gonna be related to, well, you gotta figure it out, the zoning board.
Then the other thing that they say is, they should have, we should have the planning staff or board members available at polls to answer questions.
Well, we don't, it won't be on a poll, it'll be a meeting, right, so.
We should be there to, if there are any questions.
Well, we'll be at town meeting, yeah, of course.
Oh, town meeting, yeah.
I hope.
So I would think usually each of the warrants, the select board presented at the last town meeting, whoever had the, right? So when you come to the warrant for zoning stuff, or the warrant for the planning board stuff.
Somebody from the planning board would be there.
10% and say the reason we're doing this, because of this, this, and this.
Yep.
And then the audience would vote based upon that explanation and the verbiage that they already got, plus, they've already had two public meetings, so a public hearing.
And we wanna really encourage the public meetings, we are in the stuff side town meeting, we're not spending an hour going over ADUs, but who knows?
We don't wanna do that, and we wanna have the meetings, and we also probably wanna have a brief synopsis to hand out at the public meeting.
Well, my, okay, a public meeting, I would say give them that, and give them what Chris has, and give them whatever you're gonna have, and then so they can chew on it.
This is, this is the warrant articles for zoning.
But yeah, I mean, I guess there's nothing you can do, but you don't wanna have two people here and two people at the second one, and then the day of town meeting, everyone's, ah, what an ADU.
You're gonna have that anyway. There, there are people that only go to town meeting, they will not look at a meeting, they will not come to a meeting, they'll go to town meeting and they'll, they'll.
And we'll have the website, so maybe that'll, that's the way, oh, it's a some answer.
And then you deal with it as best you can.
Yeah. And then you'll have people that'll try to amend it.
All right.
Oh, no, okay, okay, that's a good question, what is the process? If they, we ever bring something to the meeting, right, whether they wanna knock $5 off of one of Chris's fees, okay?
So, and you have to go through the whole public hearing process?
No, no.
So the public hearing, somebody could come in and say, look, I think you're, you're, I, I'd like to see the fee at 75, not at 100, as an example, then the board could take that into consideration, or the board doesn't have to do that, but then that guy can open.
But then it goes to town meeting day.
There's no amendments in town meeting, you see, I don't see the record that way.
Oh, okay, so you don't amend, you can't amend warrants, okay.
I don't, you can amend verbiage on warrants, you can amend dollars, but you cannot amend verbiage.
Okay.
We have to talk to Bruce about that.
Yes. The intent needs to remain the same.
I think so.
Is, I think so, that's worded.
Okay. I had people for this, so. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Most to adjourn.
Second.